Welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Whole Meeting for December 15, 2015. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Here.
Cameron?
Here.
Carbonero?
Here.
Danny?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky, absent. President Wallace?
Here. First item we have under the Committee of the Whole Meeting this evening is under Finance and Golf. Chairman Danny?
Yes, we're looking at 2015 through 16, six-month budget review. And again, I'm going to ask Jeff to please take it from here.
Thank you, Trustee Danny. And I see that our board meeting only lasted for about 10 minutes, so I have a very detailed, long presentation tonight. It'll take a couple hours. So I'd appreciate everyone's patience. I was just joking.
You don't get to make jokes this season. You didn't wear a Christmas tie, Jeff.
Um, October 31st marked the six-month point of our fiscal year. And typically what we do at this time is review our five major operating funds. The General Fund, the Water Fund, the Sewer Fund, the Parking Fund, and the Golf Fund. So what I'll do right now is start out with the General Fund, which is our largest operating Let me start out on the revenue side. Right now, our revenues, if you follow the column all the way to the right, we are $177,689 under budget right now with revenue. Excuse me. Some of the things affecting that is the telecommunications tax, about 6% under budget. That's been a trend that's going on for quite some time. We've seen a pretty significant decrease over the last four years of about $300,000, simply probably because of the lack of landlines and things like free texting and whatnot. So we are seeing a decrease in that area. Building permits right now are about 10% under budget. But the good news is there's a lot going on. So, once those developers come in, expedite their projects, hopefully we'll, at the end of the fiscal year, we'll be very close to meeting budget. Our garbage franchise fees is something that's trending under budget right now as far as revenue, 13% below budget. We're just not receiving the revenue we did at one point for recycling. It's very cyclical recycling, and we're seeing a decrease in that area. Our cable TV franchise fees right now is trending about 3% under budget. You know, that's basically Comcast and AT&amp;T. But over the last couple of years, we've had a big spike in revenue there. So hopefully by the end of the year, that'll level out a little bit. Some of the positives, though, the state income tax, where right now we're trending about 2% ahead of budget. We are receiving our allotments pretty much on time, and I anticipate that the state income tax is going to keep flowing in for the remainder of the year. Probably one of the larger positives is the real estate transfer tax. Right now, we're trending about 14% ahead of budget. I think that's a sign of the housing market coming back. Housing prices are up, and the volume of our transfer stamps are also increasing. Antenna license fees, this is becoming somewhat of a major revenue source for us. We're collecting almost $200,000 now in antenna license fees. These are cellular radios, if you will, on top of our water towers. And we do charge fees every month for that. And anytime somebody wants to come in, it's new, we could collect almost $30,000 for that. So that's trending ahead of budget. And again, planned review fees, again, as we see movement in the housing cycle, building department is a little bit busy in reviewing plans. And we do receive revenue for reviewing our plans. On the expenditure side, again, if you look to the far-right column, you can see that we are significantly under budget in our expenses. Every operating department is trending right at budget or under budget. And in total, we are $567,681 under budget projected for the end of this fiscal year. So with that being said, when we look at our projected revenues, our projected expenses, we should have a surplus at the end of the year in the General Fund of $19,185. So at this point, if there's any other questions on the General Fund, I'd be happy to take those, or I can just move through some of the other operating funds.
Why do you feel that the garbage franchise fees are 13% below budget?
The recycling fees that we collect, we're not receiving as much money. There's some volatility in that as far as what BFI or Republic remits back to us for what they get for recycling. So that's why we're seeing a decrease in that.
Jeff, is there a reason why we budgeted so heavy in the expense for liability insurance?
Oh, right now, we're going to be right at $610,000. In January is when we pay our premium.
Okay. That makes sense.
I know. Isn't that nice? I wish that's really what it would be.
Right.
Unfortunately, by the end of the year, we'll be there.
Right.
Taking a look at the Water Fund, operating revenues right now, projected year-end, $6,853,942. We are under budget as far as our water revenues. If you recall, this past spring and summer, it was pretty wet, and our consumption was down. And that's also, it's also something the city of Elgin's seen, and they documented that in their budget, that Bartlett is not pumping as much water. So we are a little bit under budget as far as charges for services for our water sales. But then, on the expense side, there's two positive things going on. Elgin, again, has kept their amount that they charge us for purchasing water at zero. We didn't see an increase, which is great. And some of our electric fees for pumping water is also down. And that's contributing to us being under budget again in expenses of $436,760. So I'm anticipating by the end of the year, the Water Fund will have a projected surplus of $199,705. And the Sewer Fund, pretty much the same situation. Operating revenues are pretty much right at budget, $3,366,304, trending about $55,000 over budget. Our operating expenses are trending under budget again, which is a good thing, by about Again, our electric utility costs for the pumps are down significantly. We're having some savings there. So I can project, at the end of the year, the Sewer Fund will have a surplus of $85,135. Parking Fund, pretty small operating fund, if you will. The only real revenue source are the daily meter fees that we charge and the monthly permit passes that we collect at the main office. Total revenues are $225,100. I'm projecting that to be right on budget. It's very consistent through the years. And our operating expenses are going to be under budget by about $16,993. A lot of the capital outlay, I think for the past couple of years, we had a budget for resurfacing the parking lots out there. That's fallen off. So we're able to save a little bit of money in the Parking Fund, and we'll have a projected year-end surplus of about $22,332. Now for the really good news. I know the board has done quite a bit of work in managing the golf course, making sure that we max out our revenues and watch our expenses. This is something this board has been very adamant about doing, and I think all of our hard work is paying off right now. Our revenues in all of the operating divisions of the golf course are going to be right at budget. Now, what I can tell you, that November and December has been so good that our rounds of golf and the revenue that we've generated are really up. Again, this is on a six-month basis. If we were doing this in December, I think our, I know our revenues would be over budget at this point. So we see some really good things going on. The banquet business is doing really good. The expansion is paying off. Weddings and banquets that we have are robust, and we're filling the room quite a bit with the extra people. So at six months, I projected that we'd be under, at the golf course, by about $30,000. We're going to be over. And with a good spring, again, we'll generate revenue that's over budget. On the expense side, as we have for many, many years, we're holding the line on our expenses. Each operating division in the golf course is under budget. I'm projecting our operating expenses to be under budget by $108,592. So at year-end, we should have a conservative, at this point, operating surplus in the golf course of $92,473. So with that being said, each operating fund at this point is at budget and with a projected surplus. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Now we don't have to kill the messenger.
What?
Now we don't have to kill the messenger.
Yeah. I could keep going if you want. I mean, I brought my ledger out, and we can just keep going through funds.
Could you tell us how much you're spending on tees and pencils and... Ray, are you done?
Yes. I'm sorry. I was looking at something else. Yes, that completes what we have on the golf and finance.
That does it for the Finance and Golf portion of the Committee of the Whole. Thank you, Mr. Mark Noix. And we will move on to Public Works for Chairman Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the November 3 committee meeting, we discussed Trustee Danny's request to include rental units in the overhead sewer program. And so with that being said, I'm going to turn this over to Dan Dinges and let him give us the particulars on this. And if you have anything else you want to add, you can.
Thank you, Trustee Cameron. As you can see, with the help of the Community Development GIS and our intern Tyler Isham, we were able to look at 2010 census information, and then they did some Google searches and that to try to get the best information we could. And we feel that we're in the neighborhood, in the older part of town that we talked about where these overhead sewers would come into effect. We've got approximately 664 single-family homes and 415 multifamily. And then within that, they were able to figure out rental units. And we estimate that in the 120, 129 units that would be rental. And that was the question at the last time we discussed this, was whether to include rental units in the overhead sewer program or not. And then I included some costs, the average cost that we've seen this year has ranged anywhere from $8,500 to over $11,000. It really depends on each house. We have to go out there, figure out what it's going to take to convert it, and then we get the price and work with the plumber and the resident to make it happen. So I'm available for any questions.
Dan, I have a couple of questions I need to ask you. Can you explain to us one more time the purpose that this was initiated, the reason for this?
Overhead sewer program was established to, in the older parts of town, they had gravity sewers, gravity services for basements, or like the drains from the basements or any washroom that they would have would go into a gravity line that would feed into our gravity system. If we get a large drain event, our system has cracks, and services have cracks, and rainwater gets into those lines and creates surcharging, which then can back up into a basement. If a house converts to an overhead system, it now changes the height of that sewer from the floor of the basement to basically the ceiling of the basement for it to drain to our sewer. And it essentially eliminates that backup problem.
Thank you. And Dan, does a resident have to approach the village, or is the village proactive in approaching the residents and trying to sort this out ahead of time?
Right now, the way we kind of have it set up is, it's open for the residents that, usually we hear about it when we have a big rain event and they have a sewer backup. That's when we tell them about the program. And at that point, we work with them. And if they're interested, then we tell, we give them a list of plumbers that have done the work and tell them they have to get a price, and then we approve it. Because the program's really not eligible for someone unless they've experienced a sewer backup. So that's usually how it gets initiated, is someone having that happen to them, and then we work with them to try to eliminate that situation.
Do you anticipate this being a budget issue if we do allow 129 rental units in on this program?
It can. I don't feel that we're going to have, if we add 129 to that list. We've had this other list of single-family units out there for over 20-plus years. It's not like we've had a huge draw. You can see on the past five years, I think we've averaged less than a handful per year. So I don't see that there's going to be a huge number coming in. But it can get to a point where if we did get inundated, we could say, our budget is $50,000. Once we get to that, we're done. You've got to wait till next year. I mean, that'd be something that the board could choose to do.
Could we go to a 50-50 program at that point, or a 80-80?
That would be all part of the discussion. I know other communities that do the program. It's not 100% for the most part, but it's something that we can...
So if we did have budget issues, we can address them at that time, then?
Right.
And I think with all the stormwater drainage issues that we have done all over town, where it's likely that we'll experience less of those as it is.
To add to that, in that old part of town, we just finished just about 6,000 feet of sewer lining, which is going to eliminate a lot of that infiltration. We have another 6,000 that's going to be done in January, February. So doing all that will help seal off our system. We know that the services are leaking too, so there's still going to be work to be done there. But all that little stuff helps and hopefully eliminates any type of sewer backup.
Do you think there's some point that we could address maybe the businesses and the residents, you know, getting their sewers lined? Not necessarily from a village cost standpoint, but maybe implementing a program for a discounted rate?
Yes, that's going to be, we're actually going to be forced to do that through the EPA and through the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District. They're requiring villages that discharge to their facilities to have a program where we're looking at not only at public sewers, but private as well. So we'll be coming up with a program shortly to deal with private services. I think we're required to provide a plan to MWRD by 2019, so we're going to be working on that over the next few years. And it likely would have some type of, you know, cost share or whatever to encourage people to enter into that program.
Any other questions of the board?
Is that, I do have a question. Now, this program, would it negate the reason for doing the overhead?
No, the overhead's still going to be there. You still want to eliminate those, because even if you have all the lines sealed off, I don't know that we'll ever fully get, eliminate infiltration and inflow into our sanitary sewer during a major event. There are, I don't know a community yet, even with all the lining and everything else, you still get groundwater into your sewers causing surcharge. So there's a potential for sewer backups.
Just want to make one comment. The reason that I asked that this be placed on the agenda is, was brought to my attention that there were situations that are occurring in that section of town. And when I looked into the ordinance, and I realized that it did not include rental units, I'm not saying multifamily, I'm just saying renters and include single-family homes, I thought to myself, you know, what are we here for? We're here to serve the residents of this community, and we shouldn't differentiate between whether they're homeowners or they're renters. And some of the renters that we currently have there are there because they love this village, but they can't afford a home. And some of the circumstances that they are confronted with, with the sewer backup, I thought it was an unjust and unfair program. And actually, I even thought it was somewhat a little discriminatory. And that's why I asked it to be placed on the agenda, so we could all take a look at it.
You've got the curse of the spirit inside you, don't you?
Thank you, dear. I will leave something under the tree for you.
Did the paper get all that down, Ray? Just checking.
Is the point of this...
Is there any other question? Oh, you're talking.
I can't hear you, Vince. You need to speak up.
All right.
Is the purpose of this program to go out and seek the people who are actually...
No.
Okay. So in order to qualify, they have to have a sewer backup?
That's the way it is set up right now, is you have to have an existing problem with a sewer backup to be eligible for the program.
Okay.
Not every area experiences the sewer backup. Fortunately, we haven't had a real bad problem with it, and we've improved the system over the years. But when you get hit with those large storms, that's when you'll see in those years, the number of overhead sewer requests that we complete goes up, because we had a large storm event and we had some sewer backups that year.
And the work that we're doing on the north side of town right now, is that going to help this or alleviate the possibility of this, or...
We sure hope so. By lining, we're basically putting a new pipe in the ground, because they put in a new liner inside the existing pipe. And it's a 50-year-plus solution that will seal off that rainwater from getting into the pipe.
Okay. Dan, do we know specific areas where these problems occur? I mean, other than just saying the north side of town? I mean, is it like certain blocks, certain streets?
No. It really depends on the rain event, and you never know. I mean, you could have a situation where the sewer backs up, and if someone has root problems, the water's getting in at that location. It varies any time, a year or any time. It really does vary quite a bit.
Not all villages do this, because I've got a, I've had a rental property that has exactly the same problem, and they're telling me no, no.
Not every town does, but there are quite a few that have a cost share program where they'll assist residents with it.
So they're discriminating against you?
Yes.
Teal, do you have a question?
I just want to make a comment. I'm still mightily opposed to granting this to landlords. And I agree with you, Ray. People do deserve to have a nice place to live. But that is, that is not our guarantee to the residents of this village. We can do the best we can with what we have. Our financial resources are strapped, and the benefit, the benefit of putting in an overhead sewer in a rental property is not to the renter. It's to the landlord. Because after the renter leaves, the landlord has the benefit. It's, when you become a landlord, you take into consideration, or you certainly should, that certain things are going to go wrong, and that is one of them. And that's the cost of doing business as a landlord. If one of those homes sprung a leak in the roof, it would not be the village's responsibility to run over there and plug that hole. It just wouldn't be. It would be either the landlord or the tenant, whatever their agreement is. I just don't think this is a good use of village resources.
I would have to agree with Trustee Aaron's, just based on a business stand, from a
business standpoint, just when you're a landlord, you're expected to pay the expenses of maintaining the property. And, you know, I have a tendency to agree with the way that Trustee Aaron's looks at this. But we can move it on, we can get more information. What propose we do?
I just have one more comment.
No, you can't. You already took it.
First off, the present that I was going to leave under a tree at Christmas?
Forget it.
It's not going to be there. But I want everyone to keep in mind that we're here to serve the residents of this community. And I think we're fine lining this, and we're defining whether they're a resident or whether they're a homeowner. And insurance will pay for a roof. And here we have, we have a known problem that exists, and we have the opportunity of doing something to correct this. These people live in this community because they want to be in this community. And if they end up in a home that has a problem like this, it could be unknown to them. And the homeowner would have the opportunity, the owner of that property now would have the opportunity to correct that problem for this resident that lives there, the renter. And hopefully, those renters would move on and purchase something in our village, you know.
And then we could give them an overhead of sewer.
Yeah, it really, it's like splitting hairs. I really mean it. You know, we're here to serve the residents. I firmly believe that this is, you know, a very unjust and unfair, you know, ordinance that was the program that we have. And we have the opportunity of correcting that at this point in time by reviewing it again. So...
And I would totally agree with you, Trustee Danny, that we're here to serve the residents. But I also would emphasize that, as a landlord personally, it is my responsibility to make sure that my house is in order for them to live there comfortably. And if I don't maintain that property to that level, they'll move out. And it's at my expense. That's the way I look at rentals and people that are renting their properties.
Are these people living, the ones that you know? Are they living with water in their basement?
There's been water in the basement. They can't store anything in a basement.
Is that...
They're afraid to store anything in the basement, because as Dan had pointed out, if we do have a serious...
I'm not sure that's legal occupation.
No, they could put a sand pipe in there, and that stops it.
Dan, it...
What's the problem? I don't know. I just, again, as long as Ray said something, now I'm going to have to say something. I just, with limited resources, yes, we owe our residents. I think we're trying very hard to take care of that right now. I think that to risk that much money to people that perhaps are evading their responsibilities, not the renters, but the landlords, is foolish and unwise.
Dan, just for clarification, without just flat-out denying it, is the village at fault in any way for some of the problems that happened to these homes with these sewer problems? In other words, is it because the village put in an inadequate sewer system along this north end of the property, and consequently, it backs up because we didn't put in a big enough sewer system? Is there any way that the village is, because then we're talking apples to apples, or, you know, right now, if it was a property owner, and it was partly involved with the village in some way contributed to the problem that their sewer backed up, well, then it would be different, because obviously, we'd want to help out the owner as much as the rental, the renters as well. But if you're saying there's in no way the village has contributed to this in any way, then I guess that's not the case.
Right. There's not, the village is not at fault in this case at all. We put in a sanitary system that was put in the, at the time, the code allowed for the drainage, you know, the sanitary service to be installed at that way. So there's no fault of the village. Rain, we get large rain events, both private and public systems have leaks, and it's kind of an act of God. Whenever I've been involved in cases where sewer backup of that, as long as the village had no known blockage in their system that we neglected, then it's always been an act of God, and most insurances would get denied.
And we're talking, what, pre-World War II? Houses built in the early '40s? It's technology from 70 years ago. So, no fault to the village.
Couldn't hear you, Vince.
Well, I think it would be a good thing to offer this to the 129 rental units, you know. I've had sewage in my... I've had sewage in my basement before, and it's, it's not fun. So I, I would feel for a tenant that would have to put up with it, and try to negotiate with their landlord, and try to get the problem fixed, and so, just looking at it, Dan stated that it's not gonna be a big budget concern, and if it is, we could address it at that time, so...
Be aware that if you open this up, and all of a sudden we have a big storm, and we approve something like this, it's $1,200,000 at our doorstep.
Do you, do you think that's likely, Dan?
Not likely, but it's possible.
The board could always decide that, right now, our budget is $50,000. It's the first come, first served, which gives you roughly five per year.
Yeah. How many years has this been going on?
Since the early 90s, I believe.
Have we ever had over five overhead sewer replacements in a given year?
We, going back to the 2010, 11 fiscal year, we had seven, I believe, but that was the highest year we've had since 2010, so...
Thanks, Dan.
In many years, I think I had in my last memo, fiscal year 10, 11, we had seven. 11, 12, 12, 13, 13, 14, we had one installed each year. And then last year, 14, 15, we had four, and we've had four this year. But we did have a wet spring and summer, so I think that's what generated some of that this year.
Any other questions of the board to Dan, or? If not, then that is all we have for this evening, Mr. President.
Are we gonna give them some direction on this? Are we gonna bring it back up in another discussion? What do you want to do?
What would the board like to do?
I think we could forward it to the...
I would like to see it placed on the agenda, so we can vote yes or no against it.
And I wouldn't mind, you know, I wouldn't mind seeing something that showed, you know, limits, you know? Limits, I think it might get it more support if there's a 50-50 program for renters or something like that. I think, I think it's easier to swallow in that case, where the landlord does have to contribute to the event, because I'd hate to see it happen where we pass it and every landlord has an event that next week, and, and then you're, then you're picking and choosing who got their paperwork in first. That'd be a nightmare.
I'd agree with that.
So you'd like to see some options, if we take it to the board for a final vote, some options in terms of the way it could be structured? 100% 50-50 for renters and that kind of thing?
That'd be fine.
I would.
Because I'd rather see something to help these people rather than nothing. So if I had to settle for 50-50, you know, that would be adequate as far as I would be concerned.
Do that, thank you.
Perfect. All right. That's what we'll do, then. Ask staff to bring it back with further details. We are done.
That's it? That's all? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Trustee Danny, seconded by Trustee Aaron, with a clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?